All right, good evening, everybody. We would like to start the March 7th study session for the 30th and Lucille traffic intersection. Who would like to get started on this?
I'll probably kick it off just briefly. I believe in front of you, you should have a bound information packet, looks like that. That is a timeline that our engineering supervisor Jeff Schenk put together of everything associated with the 30th and Lucille. So that'll kind of help you walk through everything that we've done to this point. I think I want to turn it over to our engineering consultants, J E O., specifically Jim Tobobin. Also joining him is Jim Weber, so it's the Jim and Jim Show this evening, but I believe Jim Tobobin is going to do the heavy lifting for us. So he'll get us started with the explanation of the warrant analysis.
Well, good evening. Appreciate you asking us to come out here tonight and visit with you. Like he said, my name's Jim Tobobin. I have been in traffic engineering and transportation planning for about 44 years now. So served for a period of time as the state traffic engineer here in Kansas, working for KDOT, and I've been a consulting engineer maybe the past 17 years or so. We're going to talk a little bit about the manual on uniform traffic control devices tonight. That is the document that's developed and adopted by the Federal Highway Administration. It's the document that is used across the country to provide guidance on when to use certain traffic control devices and when not to. Have the privilege of actually serving on the committee that helped develop that manual for a portion of my career. So we want to talk about now the intersection there at 30th and Lucille. We have taken a look at traffic signal warrants. So let me back up just a moment, talk a little bit about traffic signals. A lot of people think of a traffic signal as a safety device, and it really is not that. It's really a traffic operations device. It assigns right-of-way to different movements of traffic, tries to organize traffic at an intersection. In some cases, you can see a decrease in crashes occurring with the installation of a traffic signal. In other cases, you see an increase in crashes. So as traffic engineers, we don't just recommend their installation anywhere. We use a series of warrants. There's actually nine different warrants in the manual. They cover different situations from the volume of traffic. There's warrants that deal with pedestrians, with school crossings, with safety, and we took a look at the ones that were appropriate for this location. What we found, the city did provide us with traffic counts that were taken last fall, and then those warrants, or those traffic counts were applied to the warrants. The warrants are actually a threshold or a minimum. Below that minimum, a signal would not be warranted and probably should not be installed. But again, even meeting the threshold warrants does not necessarily mean you install a traffic signal. That's when you really need to apply some engineering judgment to see, okay, is that really going to help us out at this location? So we've got really, as traffic engineers and really the community at large, we've got a couple of goals for any intersection. I mean, we want it to operate safely, but we also want it to operate efficiently. We don't want to have unnecessary delay to drivers. That can lead to some behaviors, driver behaviors, that we don't want to see out there. So we're looking for devices that will maximize safety, but also minimize the delay to drivers. So that's what the warrants help us do, is decide whether or not it really is in the best interest of the public to install, say, a traffic signal. There are several warrants that deal with the volume of traffic. It could be you have relatively balanced traffic flows on both streets. There's a warrant that applies in that situation. Sometimes you have a major street, traffic volume is so heavy, it's difficult for side street drivers to get onto the major road or to cross some major road. There's a warrant that deals with that situation. And actually, there's a combination of those two. So really, the warrants try to look at a number of different situations that you might have in your city or in your county. We did take a look at the traffic counts. We looked first at what's called an eight-hour warrant, where you would have to meet certain traffic volumes for eight hours of a typical day. What we found is that the volumes out here would only meet three hours of that warrant. So again, there just was not enough traffic out there to satisfy that minimum threshold. We also took a look at a four-hour warrant. That's looking at a slightly different mix of traffic. But again, we only found three hours that met that warrant, and the fourth hour was just a little over halfway to the volume that you would need. So really, I guess what we, the bottom line is, what we found is that there's just not enough traffic out there to make a traffic signal the right choice. So the recommendation was to go back to a two-way stop, which is out there today, and I think that's been in effect pretty much for, since maybe the end of September. So we've got about five months of operation that way, and I believe we've not had any collisions out there. Is that correct? We haven't heard of any? Okay. So it appears to be operating safely with a two-way stop control. I've been out there again to look at the location again tonight. We've got good sight distance. So if you're at the stop sign, looking either to the east or the west, there's good sight distance out there. We know, of course, the times of the day, traffic gets a little heavier, and certainly the morning and evening peak periods. But again, there are enough gaps in traffic that a side-street driver can get out on to 30th. Now, will they be delayed a little bit sometimes? Yes. But when you take, we're trying not to focus just on a certain hour or two a day. You really need to take a look at the whole day when you're looking at safety and looking at overall traffic operations. So I'm kind of putting a lot of information out here. Maybe I should just stop for a moment and see if you have questions I can answer, or if there's some areas that you have some more interest in.
A lot of the information in here is based on Tuesday, September 27th.
Yes, I think-
As an example, school day.
Yes. And if I remember Jeff telling me correctly, we actually took counts for quite a number of days, and then we actually picked the highest volume day that we could find within that series of days.
And I know that there's been talk of justifying having an active stoplight only during the peak hour. Can you talk on that possible solution and what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, I mean, that is not a recommended procedure. I mean, because you want, well, if you put in an unwarranted signal, a lot of times you get some unexpected and undesirable actions. You'll get more disobedience to the signal. Drivers will come up there, if it's not warranted, volumes are low enough, they'll get a stop, and they look around, and there's nobody else there. So they start getting frustrated. And so you'll see drivers tend to start running things a little bit. You'll have a higher occurrence of disobedience to the signal.
I think we have some disobedience to the stop signs already, a little bit.
You may, yeah. I mean, that is not unusual in this state or across the country, especially where you've got decent sight distance. You'll see people rolling a stop sign and not coming to a complete stop. That's not unusual. I want to go back to one thing I said when I said that signals are not a safety device, and that really their purpose is to assign right-of-way. There's no guarantee that drivers will stop for a red light. So you could have a driver get a green, think they're protected, and pull out. If you have a driver run a red light, you do have the potential for a very serious collision, a right-angle collision. So usually, you know, most drivers obey signals, most drivers see signals, but occasionally you'll have a driver, for whatever reason, they're distracted, whatever, they'll run a red light. So again, they're not a guarantee of safety at an intersection.
I have a question.
Yes.
So what you've said so far is that having an unwarranted light could lead to a negative behavior change, but also having a stop sign could also lead to a negative behavior change. So I mean, that's just human nature, that people are unpredictable or will disobey the traffic laws. But there isn't any evidence that people, because there hasn't been any collisions, so there isn't any evidence that this particular light saw that predicted negative behavior, right?
That I would have to go back and take a look at. You mean, while the signal was in place?
Right, like, we didn't have any collisions while the light was up, but we didn't have any collisions while the light was, since the light has been taken down either.
I believe that's correct. Again, I'd have to go back and look at some things. An unwarranted signal will tend to increase delay to drivers. You know, they're going to come upon a red light when they didn't need to stop at the intersection. So you'll see delays going up, and there's, you know, there's some costs associated with that. There's some other impacts associated with that, like, oh, the impact on fuel consumption, air pollution. Those are fairly minor in a low-volume situation, but they are a negative impact, some things that we don't see, think about a lot of times. A traffic signal has ongoing maintenance costs and operation costs. That can be, I think, on average, $8,000 to $10,000 a year, depending on the location. But, you know, they require electricity, they require signal maintenance. You've got to get out there and make sure they're, the lights are all, the bulbs are all burning, or the LEDs are all on. You've got to make sure the controller's operating correctly. If there's detectors, you've got to make sure that's happening. So I mean, you, I know one of your council members here certainly understands everything that goes on with signal maintenance. But, yes, so what, again, what we're trying to do as a traffic engineer is pick the device for our location that we believe will operate safely and will operate efficiently. And in this case, a traffic signal probably doesn't fill that bill.
Jim?
Could you speak to speed limits and how that works in traffic? Or just to lower the speed limit?
You know, as a traffic engineer, if we could just lower a speed limit and everybody would slow down, that would be a wonderful thing. It doesn't really work that way. Really, drivers, you know, the majority of drivers are very reasonable, they're very safety-conscious, they'll pick a safe speed to travel at that roadway, whether or not there's a sign out there or on it. You know, you're not going to go 70 miles an hour down a residential street if you don't see a speed limit sign. You're going to adjust for what you see. You're going to see parked cars, you're going to see driveways, you're going to see people out in their front yards, whatnot. See, as a driver, you adjust to the conditions, and the majority of drivers are very good at picking a safe speed. So from a traffic engineering community, what we decide is that 85% of the drivers out there are showing good judgment, and that's what we set the speed limit on, is wherever that 85th percentile speed is. We might make a few minor adjustments, a few miles an hour one way or another, to hit a five-mile-an-hour increment. But generally, if you follow what the majority of drivers are telling you in their judgment what the safe speed is, you're going to get most of the traffic traveling at about the same speed. That minimizes conflicts between vehicles and makes for the safest roadways. At least that's what the research has shown us. The speed limit out there is 45 miles an hour. I know we've got the radar speed sign out there. I think that's a good thing, is you're coming westbound toward that intersection. Getting out and driving it today, trying to flow in the traffic stream, it appeared to me like drivers were pretty well obeying that speed limit. I know you're coming in from a little bit more of a rural area, you're coming westbound toward this intersection, so as you get more and more into rural areas, you can see higher speeds. But it appeared like people were pretty much obeying the 45 mile-an-hour speed limit, at least when I was out there today driving it.
Is it Jim?
Yeah, it's Jim, yes.
Jim, the only concern, biggest concern I have, as you know, I was a traffic signal technician. These lights are semi-actuated. That means they only come on when indication on your B-phase movement is going to activate it. So I don't see, unless there's school time, we're coming in to activate the light, that it's going to turn, they're going to get a non-actuated, they're going to be a red phase on A-phase. So it's not a time-based traffic, but it's done with microwaves.
Right.
So I'm more concerned about when the buses are coming out during, going in at morning time and coming home in the evening time. You don't have the protecting of that bus when she gets over the loop of a keep adding time, keep adding time, keep adding your passage time to that. So they have, in my opinion, they would have more time to get in crash. That car coming doesn't give them the protection that they need. The more thing that I have, the reason I'm for this traffic light is to give those buses and the parents. I do believe that was a seventh and eighth grade school, and your superintendent's here. Now it's a sixth-grade school. Now you have more volume coming out of it and more volume going in. The biggest thing, I think, what I hear from parents, and I quite understand it, is that time when the school's letting out and the school's going in. There's more heavy traffic coming there. That a stop sign, in my opinion, won't, is not adequate, adequate for that. The traffic light will give more time for the buses, it'll give more passage time, and it'll give more time to get through the light. At that time, I believe it's more safe than a stop sign. People won't take that much chances with a green light or a red light, running the red light as they do a stop sign. That's my opinion, that's why I'm for this traffic light. More reason is for it's got more protection on those times of the traffics are heavy. So otherwise, I could almost agree with you that when a B-phase movement is not loaded up, or what A-phase is going, well, yeah, I mean, they have to take their time. When they get a light on B-phase movement, then they'll get the light and go. It's only a seven-second delay. So what I'm more concerned is the time when the kids are going out of school and the kids are coming into school. I would say you would double your traffic, you'd double your volume. So that's where my biggest concern is, is that's why we need the traffic light. When I was in traffic school, we went through warrants, I know what warrants are, but also they taught me where the need is. We have traffic lights at 11th and our stadium over there, that a man got killed for crossing the street during a football game. As I told you before, the HOC system, I put the HOC system in, it relieved that problem. Now we stop everybody, the people come from the stadium, go across the street, and it was because of a traffic light that solved the problem. We have a light, a HOC system on 9th and Main, same distance. I think we only have maybe one pedestrian every two times a week, but that light was there for a need. It might not match your warrants, but it was a need. And I believe at 30th and Lucille, there's a need there for the times where the school buses are coming to school and when school buses are leaving. At that point, too, you have all these parents, you have that traffic light that's going to hold, process, give more time, added time, for light and safely get them across the street. It's more for me, as a city councilman, as a need. I know the warrants are there for base, but I'm going to tell you, that's how I feel. So, I mean, that's what I look at it at. I understand the traffic light is not a safety device, but at this time, it's a need that will hold the traffic up so that bus can get in there. How long's a bus? 20, 30 feet, 40 feet? It's almost two times as big as a car. So once it passes that loop with that camera, bingo, it's going to give it more than 1/2% or 2 point on the passage time, more to get in there. It's more safe, it's more of a need than it is for the warrants.
Well, I do understand what you're saying, is we do have certain times of the day, and really, three times of the day, the morning peak, and that also corresponds with when parents and the buses are going to school. We have the peak in the afternoon when school is letting out, the buses are coming out, parents are coming out, and then we have an evening peak that's more dependent on workers getting off work, heading back home. And I do understand that we have more delays on Lucille during those times of the day. But you also have delay with the traffic signal. And again, a traffic signal cannot guarantee that there won't be a collision at the intersection. And again, we often see more crashes, and fortunately, they didn't occur when the temporary signal was out there. I am glad to hear that. But again, a traffic signal isn't a safety device. It does assign right-of-way, and we do have times, like you say, that we do have delays out there. But we also, if you watch it, and I know there have been some really excellent videos taken of the operations, traffic does move and does, is able to turn on to 30th Street. I think from those videos at least, and maybe that was just time of day, but it appears that a lot of the southbound traffic is turning right. Typically, a right-turning driver does not have the delay that a left-turner or a through driver might have. So, and that's even a factor that we would take into account when we're looking at the volumes for signal warrants. A lot of times, you will reduce the volume on traffic if you have a heavy right-turn movement, just because you know they're not going to be delayed that much. We didn't in this case, but-
So you're talking that coming off Lucille? Is that what you're talking about? Is that coming off Lucille, going to 30th?
I'm sorry, coming off, southbound on Lucille. I may have misspoke.
Well, in my opinion, you can take care of that with a time delay on your turns on that through lane. We can time it out. It's the traffic light, sees that that car did turn on right, it's not going to react. So that can be done with a controller program. It will see the car there, and the car does, it's not going to make it go green on your A-phase, it will hold it up. So that can be done with a controller, a controller in there with your time delay. So that's solved. Our controllers today can do a lot of things. They can solve the situation. And so all the stuff you're telling me can be done with controls. It's only a three-legged control system out there, only three phases out there, your left turn, we have that, and then your through phases. So to me, back to what I'm saying, it's a need. I hate to see a bus get flipped over. We know that there's high speeds coming off. I looked at the time, all the miles per hour, okay? I looked at that. We have a car come off, when a car runs, goes across, and they're not enough time, and no bus gets hit at 45 to 50 mile an hour. I hate to be, I hate to say we should have put a safety device. So is stop signs, they're not a safety device either. They're the same as a traffic light. But as a traffic light, you have more time, it's going to hold your traffic, because you've got people on the camera, on the movement, it's going to give that bus more time to get over. To me, it's a safety. So that's what I feel.
To speak to your point, Steve, I would hate to wait until there is a fatality incident at that light to make a significant change personally.
Jim? Go ahead.
I have a lot of personal input on this particular topic, and I've actually been out at that intersection several last days, monitoring it. And I would encourage anyone here, and I respect Mr. Garza's opinions and Stacy's opinions, to go do so and see for yourself what's really going on. And I would commend the Bueller School District on the traffic flow there. I was honestly surprised. Now, I'll give you the full story, but I was very surprised that there was as little delay as there is. They have, and I've talked to a couple of parents, and they have adjusted their time drop-offs and pickups to make it more palatable for everyone, and I think it's been effective. So I was there Thursday morning, and I went at 7:00. You know, and there's no traffic there until 7:15. Now, I live, I mean, I live one block east of there. I have been going through this intersection, I go through at all times of the day, I've been through this time of the day for the last 18 years. So this is not a new thing to me. I'm very familiar with the intersection and the whole gamut of everything. But I want, so I've gone and sat at the intersection. I did that Thursday morning, and there was not a single time, the only traffic of any merit was between 7:15 and 7:35. I got there at 7:00, I stayed till 8:00. So there was nothing, literally, I mean, just routine, nothing, between 7:00 and 7:15. Between 7:15 and 7:35 is when the people are bringing their kids, the buses are bringing the kids in. After 7:35, there wasn't anything. I stayed till 8:00, and there was never once a time when there was more than 10 cars backed up on Lucille. Not, never, and that was not the whole time. I'm talking about between 7:15 and 7:35, the busiest time. There was never a time anybody waited more than two minutes, which I weighed at on intersection in front of our business, more than two minutes significantly daily. Is that more than normal? Absolutely there, because there's no traffic there. I live there. I live one block east of there. And so what has actually been done, I think the Bueller School District has done a great job of figuring out how to get traffic through there in a very good manner. I, there are, I'm assuming they're sending some buses, and of course, there's buses going up, I'm sure, to 41st Street, some going up to, oh, what the street is, just north of the school there. Huh? Well, not 43rd, no, Spiglaz, Spiglaz. But because there weren't that many buses even coming through there. I mean, there were buses, but there was less than what I expected. The bus drivers all were, they were well-trained, they were well, they executed well. There was never anything. I then was back yesterday afternoon, and again, same type thing. I went at 2:25, because that's, or 2:20, that's when the school, it said 7th hour ended, but they have this champion hour, or whatever that is, to 2:50. Anyway, I got there at 2:20, because I didn't know if people actually went to champion hour or not. And anyway, so there was literally nothing between, until 2:45. About 2:45, the traffic kind of picked up. About two forty-five, the traffic kinda picked up and, and lasted till about three oh five. And that was, that was it. I stayed till, till three thirty, but there was nothing. Uh, so it was in the, it was both drop-off and pickup, twenty-minute windows. Again, there was absolutely not any more than ten cars at the most. I'm not saying there were always ten cars, at the most, there were ten cars. And none of them waited that, that long. I mean, I, I waited intersections longer than that, all, yeah, frequently, and around schools at, at pickup and drop-off time, every school, you're gonna have that. Uh, and I, I have been pulling in and out of that intersection, one block east on Hawthorne Lane, for many years. I've never had any trouble getting in and out of there. You have to wait a few times when there's traffic, there's nev- I've never encountered it, which would, all of your traffic studies basically verify what I already believed, what I already found, and, and then what I fa- and I would encourage everyone here that has a concern to go, to go, go sit there and watch it. It's easy. Just pull over and, pull over in the ditch and just see for yourself. There, it's, it, it's a very orderly-run deal. And there's, I, there's not any, uh, that, I, I don't see any, uh, concern. Uh, I, I, I mean, we all, we all care about safety, we all care about the kids, nobody wants any accidents. Uh, there's not anybody in here who, who, who doesn't care greatly about that. And, and, uh, uh, but, but to, to spend, uh, a bunch of money to basically solve a problem that does not exist is, I think, wasteful on our part. We, we have, uh, we have lots of problems and, and lots of, uh, monetary needs in this town, uh, probably some others that, that would be more beneficial and impactful for kids than this. Uh, if you go sit there and watch it, I think you'll conclude the same. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm, and your, your traffic studies all say that. I'm, I'm not making this up. They, they, they all said that, you all concluded that, I believe that. I went though and to, to view it, it was clear to me that that was the case. And I, I already had a, 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 a living there, thought that was the ca- I have heard from countless people, uh, that also feel that way. Uh, and when I say countless, I mean countless. Uh, and they're not here tonight, I, they will be happy to come if, if they're, uh, needed. Uh, but, uh, that, I, uh, talked with a couple of parents who said, who, whose kids go there, and they take their kids. And they said, I just go a little early and, and take them, and it's no problem, it's easy. I pick them up, no problem. You gotta sit in line a couple of minutes. You gotta do that at every school around town to, you know, when you pick up your kids and take them. So, that's, uh, I, 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 that's, that's my, that's my experience, that's my opinion. I would encourage anybody who thinks that, that they're not, they're unsure of, of their position to do so and, and go, go, go view it. It, it's easy to do.
Stuart, I did that right after they took the light down, and I had those same thoughts. I thought, well, this doesn't seem so bad, you know? There was a line of traffic, maybe more than ten at a certain time, and I've got a friend that, that she has a, a son that goes to that school, and she was not happy at first. And I asked her just last week, and she's like, you know what? We've adjusted, and it seems like the traffic is getting better. I will say that I was out there today, and there was one student, a little girl with a backpack, headed southbound across 30th from the school, walking. But her mom was parked in a car on the north side of 30th waiting for her. And I thought, this is not on us to fix, this is a parent problem. She doesn't wanna drive through the mess in front of the school. That's my opinion, I don't know what the situation was, but I know that several have mentioned that the pedestrian problem there, um, and that's what I saw today, and I'm, maybe it was just an isolated thing, but I was like, wow. Um, it just, I, I would, no, I wouldn't want my child crossing there. Anyway, but I concur, I, you know, I've thought a lot about possibly, you know, lowering the speed zone, and I know at some point, you had said that it pushes traffic closer together and actually increases the risk. Um, one of the meetings, I, that's what I heard. Now, I've been told I hear things wrong a lot of times, but, uh, um, those are, those are my thoughts, I, you know?
Well, it, it's important that we have our own observations, I wanna, and as we keep moving forward and asking questions, I wanna keep having, uh, input from personal experiences and what you've heard from the public. Did you have a point you were trying to say something earlier?
I had a question. If an accident occurs at a traffic signal that is unwarranted, are there any additional liabilities that, or we put ourselves in additional liability?
I'm not an attorney, so I don't think-
That's a good answer.
-I'm gonna answer that. But, uh, but I mean, the manual is the guidance that we follow on when advice should or should not be used, so-
Okay.
-in this case, the manual on uniform traffic control devices would be telling you, you should not use a traffic signal in this location.
Okay. I, I have some questions. I, I know we've talked about pedestrians, I'm not seeing any, I know it's got an asterisk next to it in regards to pedestrians and bicycles on crosswalk, there really wasn't a way to track that during our data, other than, other than visible. I just wanna make sure that when we're looking at the data, that we're justifying what data we're looking at and what we did take into account or did not take into account.
JEOs count, which is, there is a count in there, and that was done with the, your cam- the cameras that you guys have, and those do, will count vehicles and pedestrians.
Okay.
Um, we've also, uh, wanted to point out, in the very cover, there's a time, uh, my ti- the timeline, I had missed two, we, this, uh, City of Hutch also ran two drone footages that you guys can have access to, and Nick Hemphill ran a, uh, drone footage that he did a time lapse on. You can look on there and see, uh, you could be able to count pedestrians and everything yourself as well through the entire process. Um, and then just real quick notes, right after the traffic counts, there's a sheet, um, that was detailed by Brian Clennan, um, as he sat through one of the, uh, a morning drop-off, and just so you can see, he timestamped it, he did a really good job documenting it, I was just trying to find some information. Um, the accidents, just to get clear, there was three, there's been three accidents since 2015. There was two before the signal, one with the signal. All of them were minor, um, rear-end accidents. Um, and then, just, uh, quick, on the speed study that we did do, the eighty-fifth percentile does come in at forty-nine miles an hour with the, with the regulated speed sign, which would back up the forty-five mile per hour, uh, document, but I just can throw those a couple little tidbits in.
Well, and, and speaking of, speaking of accidents, I know we've had issues with people trying to drive through the ditch, which are not reported as accidents. That's something I think we need to, regardless of, that needs to be looked at or observed. I don't know if that means having an officer out there certain times of day, but we've got people driving through the ditch and there's kids walking up that street.
But, uh, it, the best we could do would be to, to, would be a physical patrol of some sort, yeah.
I, I, I would say that I think that is, was a very rare event. I, I know that was brought forth, uh, I have never seen that. And, and when I say I've lived there eighteen years, and I go through there, I went, went through there all those times, at, at those times, in the morning, not in the afternoon, but in the morning, I was going to work when, when, at, at, at those times. I've never seen anything at all. Uh, and, and, uh, and, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a few lunatics out there that, that, that will do just about anything.
I don't think we control people making stupid decisions.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I get that.
One other thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as far as the people not wanting it, I do believe when we started this, there was two thousand signatures that came and said they wanted the light, we can't forget that. I know a couple of them were out of town, or whatever the case would be, but there's two thousand signatures that said the light, that they needed the light there. Also, as far as the, the traffic light, I retired in 2018. I think the bridge, the Forty-third Bridge was being constructed at that time. I do believe they put the temporary traffic light up for that inbound traffic coming across. I do think the traffic light worked fine, they had no problems with that traffic light at that time, so I don't think it's gonna be that big of a problem just to put the traffic light back up. Those three years that that light was up, uh, for the bridge being built, I think it was two years, whatever the case may be, two things. Number one is, I, I see these two thousand signatures, I see the light was up two, three years before, the actual traffic light, never had no problems and so forth, so that has to be brought up too. So, um, this, this, just so, he, uh, Commissioner Stewart was saying about, there's nobody, well, there is, there's two thousand signatures that said they wanted the light, they need the light, so...
That brings up a question I had.
Okay.
Okay. So, if, there's been discussion about putting the lights back up, or in a more temp- or more permanent nature, the way they were. But I've also been of the understanding that to do it properly, that was, it was warranted because it was a temporary, a temporary fix. It's not even not a fix, but it's a temporary measure. If we were to do this, the, the stoplight, the traffic light there permanently, would we have to redo the intersection with tur- with turn lanes to do it properly per standards? I mean, I was confused on that.
Well, let's, I mean, let's assume we have an intersection where a warrant-
Let's see, let's say it's warranted.
Okay. Uh, we've got a forty-five mile per hour speed limit, maybe a few drivers traveling a little over that. I would not wanna see a permanent traffic signal installed without left turn lanes on the major roadway. Uh, again, if you can picture forty-five mile an hour traffic, uh, but you have, with, without a left turn lane, you have a left turn driver, he stopped in a through lane. And so, a driver that's coming up from behind sees a green light, but would assume maybe that traffic in front of him is moving, and so that's, that's when you can kinda see an increase in rear-end collisions. So, I mean, you are talking about a fairly significant project to widen the roadway, put in an adequate left turn lane, both eastbound and westbound, um, and then install the traffic signal. Signals have gotten a lot more expensive. Uh, we're estimating on, well, some more major intersections where you might have multiple lanes approaching, maybe a four or five-lane roadway, crossing another roadway, four hundred thousand, north of four hundred thousand for that type of an installation. Here, you know, we've basically got a single lane in each direction, uh, maybe turn lanes, kinda throwing a dart at a dartboard, maybe you're talking three hundred thousand or so for the, just the signal portion of it. Uh, then you're going to, gosh, you're gonna have to widen, boy, probably at least five or six hundred feet each direction, east and west on, on 30th. Um, not as good about giving you a guess on that type of a, a project, but, but you are talking about a pretty significant project to do that. Uh, if we were to consider spending that kinda money on the intersection, I would also suggest we look at a roundabout at that location, a single-lane roundabout. Uh, there's, um, I mean, there, I mean, any type of project is, is expensive. Uh, the roundabout probably will not go as far east and west, uh, the work you have to do. Thing I like about a roundabout is it, it really is a safety measure. I mean, we'll see, I mean, if you look at the national statistics, if you're looking at serious injury crashes, fatal crashes, uh, the odds of that happening at a roundabout are like, get cut like ninety percent. Um, and, and the reason for that is the, the type of crashes that really cause serious injuries or fatalities are the right angle crashes, where you have a, a northbound vehicle getting hit by an eastbound vehicle. Uh, with a roundabout, what you, you have a couple of things. Uh, one thing, you've got much lower operating speeds. Speeds are maybe fifteen miles an hour entering the roundabout, and the collision types are more of a side swipe, so it's more of a property damage type collision, not a, not an injury type collision. So, if, I mean, if the city were considering spending the, the amount of money it would take to put in a permanent traffic signal, widen for left turn lanes, I would wanna do some checking to see what is the, the cost differential between that and a roundabout. The roundabout may be more expensive to construct, but it may have, uh, it would not have the operating and maintenance, uh, expense that you have yearly with a signal. So, if you look at a life cycle cost, I think they become much more comparable. Um, the roundabout is, is certainly going to slow speeds, because drivers have to slow down to about fifteen miles per hour or so to enter the roundabout. Um, I will tell you that there's, there's no design that's perfect, uh, 'cause we have people out there that do silly things sometimes. But statistics, statistics have shown that a roundabout would operate much more safely than any other type of intersection. That's, that's why I'm a real proponent of, of roundabouts. They also operate, uh, with much less delay typically. I mean, normally with a roundabout, uh, you come up, you have a yield point, if there's nobody in the roundabout, you're just going on through it, you're going slow, but you may not have to stop. Um, I've seen one location in Topeka, uh, where they had a, a four-way stop, and they would have traffic that backed up a quarter mile. I mean, I went out and watched it, and then I watched it after the roundabout went in, and it's like, where did the traffic go? I mean, it handled it so much more efficiently. Um, so anyway, I'm just, uh, if you, I mean, from a traffic engineer's standpoint, I would look at this intersection and say, it's operating safely as a two-way stop. Uh, delay, when you look at, over the, over the day, delays are gonna be less with the stop signs. Delay may not even be all that much greater with stop signs than a signal during peak times, uh, because with forty-five mile an hour traffic on 30th, you're gonna wanna have detection of that traffic to hold a green while that traffic is coming, as well as put in a call for, uh, for the side street traffic. Um, so I'm, you know, you may still, still see cars stacked up eight or ten deep, waiting at a signal to get a green light, you know, to enter, uh, 30th. So, it's not like that line of traffic's gonna necessarily go away. Um, anyway, I, I, I think, I think overall, we're seeing good operations out here, both from a safety and an efficiency standpoint, uh, that I'm not sure a traffic signal would really improve. So, anyway.
Well, I have done my homework. I went to the engineering department, our newest traffic light was Fifth and Main, it's only a hundred and eighty-five thousand for traffic lights only. Uh, don't believe, I'm just a traffic tech, I'm not no. The street is just as wide at 30th Street as, uh, Main Street, I believe, I, I took some measurements. Your costs, our newest traffic light was Fifth and Main, it was only a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I have the proof right here.
Just out of curiosity, when was that put in?
Uh, we were-
Twenty nineteen.
When was it?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Covid has really impacted material costs, I will tell you that. They have gone up forty, fifty percent or more. Uh, traffic signal poles, you're probably, once you order them, you're probably waiting six months for delivery at best. Um, but just in the, the transportation field, we have just seen prices skyrocket. So, it's all due to Covid, we really haven't-
Right.
...uh, recovered from, from that whole supply chain issue. So, yeah, I, I would agree. A few years ago, two hundred thousand wouldn't, wouldn't surprise me for the cost of a, a signal installation, but I, I, honestly, I was shocked when I, I heard some bids that we had, uh, on another one of our projects. Again, it was a little larger intersection, but, uh...
Well, I hate to say this, if it comes to cost, we have a perfect traffic division. I installed all the traffic lights myself, we have the trucks, we have the buckets, we have, we, we have a very talented people in the City of Hutchinson. So, I hate to do that because we're short of people, I'd hate to put that on our traffic division, but we could do it ourselves. We have perfectly good people that can do that, so, if it came to that. Uh, I, I did some checking, I done working on this for a couple of weeks, I got a lot of paperwork here- Uh, I, I did some checking. I've done working on this for a couple of weeks. I've got a lot of paperwork here. The last traffic light we installed was two thousand nineteen. It's fifth in Maine. The white, the street width of the main street's about the same as thirtieth street. Uh, the only thing that I would do, if I was me, is improve Lucille. Lucille's a little narrow. Uh, and uh, I would never suggest that we keep, we put traffic lights unless we change the microwaves to cameras. Cameras react better on the B-phase movement off Lucille. We probably would update our controller, just different things, but uh, it can be done cheaper than three hundred thousand. Now, I'm not saying you set that for the whole, you said for straight movement and all that stuff, I'm sure.
No, I mean, that, that was the signal installation. And that, that's assuming you're hiring a contractor to do it, not doing it with city staff. But yes, you would want to have probably either video or radar detection. Uh, you'd want that detection on both roadways. Yeah, it just.
And then on thirtieth street, we'd have a protective left turn there to move the left turns better and not quit the stack up, you're stacking up. So that helps having a protective left turn. And I would suggest a protective left turn there uh with the, with cameras that are microwaves. Microwaves work fine, but they're not as good as the, as the uh cameras. So I went and checked on the prices. I knew this was gonna come up, so I knew fifth to Maine was the last one, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So I'm not agree with you, costs have come up.
Mr. Schenk, didn't, didn't you, we, we reviewed this, you reviewed these, the numbers, I believe it was you that, uh, a couple of weeks ago at, at the meeting, as to what the estimate was. There was way more than just traffic lights that would need to be done here. Do you have that? Can you share that?
Yeah, we, so we went, started going into, to do my own cost evaluation. And that was where there's uh building the stacking, because it is inappropriate stacking east and westbound. There's an RCB on the one side reinforced concrete box underneath the street. That's gonna have to be re-lengthened, and I don't know how old it is, it may have to be redone, but it's, that would have to be evaluated. Um, on the north side of the intersection, there's another half RCB, half pipe thing that's gonna have to go away because it's gonna have to be widened as well. Um, so we'd enlist a JEO because not only, we, there's several other factors, because we have the traffic signal poles, like, right now, the traffic signal poles are too close to the road. The temporaries are actually in, kind of a, they're not out of the clear zone. It's kind of dangerous where they're at now. So to get them where they have to be, where we get, we get an easement from the property owners, get the poles back out of that clear zone. Um, on the south side of the intersection, there's also low power lines. Um, the signal poles will be in conflict with, uh, when they're installed. So with that, I don't know what that would take with coordinating with EverG to see about raising all of their, um, transmission lines that are there. Uh, but they would have to be elevated, and so I don't know if there's any cost associated with that. Kind of about here is where I realized me pricing it was not going to happen. So we had got with JEO who had given, gave us a price to, if we wanted to do a full evaluation and then, and cost estimate for the entire intersection.
And what, did they, did they provide that or?
No, I, I put the brakes on that.
Okay, yeah.
I wasn't ready to invest that money in that full-on study until we had a discussion, whether we, we felt gut feeling if an investment was worthwhile. No reason paying them to do the study.
Right, right, right.
Jim, does adding traffic signals, does that create ADA accessibility concern? Do we have to update that intersection to meet those as well? I know in most signals in town, it would require that, but I didn't know.
Not in, I don't think there's anything that would trigger that out here. Um, typically, I mean, we don't have any sidewalks out in that area, uh, that we'd be trying to connect to. So, um, I mean, if, I know that there has been, you know, some observations of students crossing thirtieth. But really, I mean, if you're talking about that, you're talking about sidewalk system, sidewalks to get them up to school. If, if you have that sidewalk system, then yes, you'd wanna, you'd wanna put in pedestrian push buttons, pedestrian signals, you'd want to have appropriate ramps, sidewalk ramps. Uh, but no, I, just installing a signal does not.
Does not trigger, okay.
Need to do. But I mean, it, it would be a factor that we'd want to consider. We would want to try to really document how many students or pedestrians are crossing that, at that location.
I, I will say that in, in the last two days, I've done it, there were none. I, I mean, I'm not saying there's never any, but there were none. I mean, uh, I was there, and there were none.
We did take a, uh, a drone footage of, of one afternoon dismissal, and there were four kids that, um, walked south and west across, across the property and, and disappeared southwest. But there were four, four kids that were just cutting across wherever.
They weren't going to a car.
Yeah, not that we could tell. I mean, just.
That drone footage that was shot on that afternoon was of Lucille directly in front of the school, watching for traffic patterns in front of the school. We have a different drone footage of the intersection at a different date, but the one he's referring to. So we were, we were watching the traffic pattern in front of the school on Lucille, so they walked outside of the field division.
That was not at the thirtieth and Lucille. And I, I would encourage anyone and everyone to, to go sit there and wa- and, and just view it. It's easy. And I, it's really, uh, 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 just look for, watch for yourself. And I, I, I'm just, uh, I think, I think this, this, the, the school district has done a great job of, of designing the, the traffic in and out of the school to make it a smooth, relatively good flow. And, uh, I, I, it's, it's, you know, go, go tomorrow morning and, 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 and do it. I mean, see, see.
Well, as far as that's concerned, I have seen plenty of videos, because people that want the traffic light come to me and show me things, and they show me the traffic's backed up. If we want to go that route, I can get plenty of videos showing that the traffic's backed up all the way up, they can't get out. Bus is almost getting hit. I mean, you can do that either way. But I mean, uh, people that hear me and say to me that I, I think there's a need for the traffic light, they call me up. I go over there, they show me the, the film of where the traffic's backed up. So I would assume everybody would go out there and take a look at themselves. I would agree with you, so.
I think, I think what we're being guided on here is whether we need to make a decision on, on if we're going to invest money, if it's going to be a, a reasonable expectation that it will improve the situation, or if we're trading one issue for a different issue. I think that's what we're trying to be, that's what we need to try to make a decision on. And we're not making a decision tonight. We're, we're gathering information and discussing. And I just want to make sure we're clear on that. We're gathering information, discussing. There's no decisions to be made tonight. That, let's carry on with more questions. And gathering data. Um, any other situations at this intersection that we're concerned with that he can address in regards to a traffic engineer answer?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you mentioned that the, um, an unwarranted signal increases the risk for, um, collision. It sounds like those would be, um, rear end collisions at approximately forty-nine miles per hour. Um, do you know the likelihood of survival of a rear end collision at forty mi- forty-five, forty-nine miles per hour?
Well, I mean, you can certainly have an, an injury. Rear end collisions are more typically associated with, uh, property damage. But again, speed is obviously a factor in, in the severity of crashes. So the higher the speed of roadway, I mean, the higher the, the chances for an injury type crash. But ti- but typically severity is lower for a rear end collision than it would be for a right angle collision.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask a very specific question. Surely there are situations that have happened in the past where a two-way stop has been converted to a traffic signal situation similar to this. And I'm curious, I know the warrants are there for a reason. I'm curious what the before and after data shows in regards to accidents, traffic patterns. Or, I know you're speaking in general, but on a, a specific situation like this. Or if that, if, if there is data out there.
There is data out there. Do I have it on the tip of my tongue?
Fair enough.
No, I do not. But, but there is something, uh, crash modification clearinghouse, and it does look at certain situations. It, it provides kind of the research on different situations. So we could certainly look into that and, and get you some information.
Is that data, is that what's used to determine the warrants?
No, no. The, the data we use to look at the warrants are the volume of traffic. We're also looking at the number of crashes that would happen at a location. So those are the, kind of the two key things that would come into play here.
Okay, I guess, just for my clarity. So the warrants, forget the warrants, looking at data before and after an intersection is adjusted. It's changed. And if you look at accidents before and accidents after, is there statistical data to show, okay, once we get to this point, and hey, magically that happens to be our warrant, statistically, we don't want to go over that, or we want to stay under that if we're a two-way stop. I'm asking if it has any bearing on it, the before and after accident, historical data. If there's historical data available.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is certainly research that would, would talk about the, what happened if a traffic signal was put in, if an unwarranted signal was put in, if an unwarranted signal's taken out, kind of what the impacts of that would be. Yeah, we can find some information for you on that. And am I understanding the question correctly, or?
Um, yes, I mean, I'm looking for real world data in regards to before and after what the accident counts would be on a situation like our intersection here.
Yeah, we, we could do some investigation for you and give, give you some information.
If that's something that they pull pretty easy.
Yeah.
So it seems like the warrants are there for a reason, and I understand that, but it seems like anything outside of the warrants, instead of being, we're being overly cautious, which you would presume is a good thing, it seems like being overly cautious when it comes to traffic is a bad thing. Um, which, like, seems counterintuitive.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Sometimes there are maybe unintended consequences for doing certain things. And I will tell you that, uh, the warrants that are in use have been developed over a long, long period of time. Um, and, you know, traffic engineers' goals are to have safe operations. Our goal is to be, move traffic efficiently. So I mean, those are the things that we've been looking at over time. And we've been looking at before and after impacts of, okay, we installed a traffic signal at this, uh, level of traffic. What happened? Did, did crashes go up? Did they go down? So I mean, traffic engineers have looked at that type of thing, and that's really, that national experience is, has what has been brought to the committee to develop those warrants. But yes, there's times when you would think, okay, let's put in a signal, we're gonna make it safer. You do it, and in fact, you have the opposite impact. You actually increase the number of, of collisions that occur at a location, so.
But it seems like you're increasing the number of possible collisions that are a certain type of collision, which have a higher predictability of survival because they're more than likely occurring at a certain predicted speed.
Yes, I mean, you're, uh, typically with a traffic signal, you will see the number of right angle collisions decrease, but the number of rear end collisions increase. It's, and I, that's not a hard and fast rule, but that is of, many times what we see.
Yeah.
Now, you know, in the situation we have here, where we've had maybe, maybe one crash a year, either with or without a signal, you know, it's, it's pretty hard to say that it's, it's gonna have a major impact one way or another. But I, I do want to tell you that putting in signals, it, it's not a safety device. It is not a guarantee that the intersection's gonna be safe. And that's the, that's the hard thing for a lot of people to kind of wrap their, their arms around because you would think with the traffic signal, if it does its job, if everybody obeys it, it would, it should work perfectly, but it.
That also seems like a statement that was written by an attorney, though. Like, we're not gonna say this is a safety device because then somebody becomes liable if we say this is a safety device.
Well, and, and that may be, I mean, you'd have to ask your attorney about that. But one thing I do know is that it, it is an operation device. You're trying to control traffic operations. In certain cases, it may improve safety. In certain cases, it may have the opposite impact. And same thing with delay. In certain cases, it helps delay. In certain cases, it could add delay.
Right. I think there's two ways of looking at the situation. One is, are we doing this because it's inconvenient to drive through the, the intersection? Yeah, maybe. Is the light gonna fix that? Maybe not, because it gets a lot of traffic during certain times of day. I don't really care about shaving a couple of minutes off of anybody's commute personally. I care about keeping people safe. And it seems like that is the end goal of everybody up here. Everything that you've stated so far to me isn't painting a picture that this is going to make people unsafe or that we have any liability of, if we put up a light, is there any liability on the city or on us or on anybody in that case, if an incident were to happen? If an accident happens at a completely unprotected, um, intersection right now, being as we've held all of these meetings, we've had all these discussions and studies, I personally would feel responsible if something happened to somebody at that intersection. Um, and I think a lot of people are looking at it from a safety perspective, not a, not a time and a time saved and a traffic perspective. That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Clarifications?
I think of, maybe you and I can discuss this, Steve. I think of Avenue A in Poplar. I don't want to go down rabbit holes. There's accident after accident there. I was in the line of traffic there, and I thought, this is worse than thirtieth and Lucille. Now granted, traffic's not running at forty-five miles an hour. And we took down a light there. And I guess, I guess through all this conversation, there was probably accidents there with the light. And I'm, I'm just wondering if we're trading. One problem for another. That's, it's.
The biggest problem I have as a traffic signal technician, a light will safely, in my point of view, once you get a green, those bus drivers know they can go, okay? Especially, especially on Lucille. They get a green light, they know they, they don't have to worry about being a race car driver. They don't know if there's a car on top of that hill going fifty mile an hour. They don't know. I know that's going through their minds. But once they get that green, they know, can be calm that they can get their load across the street on thirtieth street safely. They know that. And I'd hate to be a bus driver knowing that I, I went, I shouldn't have went. I shouldn't have went. And then see that her, the bus gets hit, it gets rolled over, we've got a bus full of kids. Is it worth it? No, it's not worth it. You gotta give those bus drivers a thing that they know, they know when they get that green light, they're safe with that green light. Are they safe with a stop sign? No, they don't know what's coming over that hill. They know when they cross the street with a green light, they're safe.
But he just said it's not a safety device.
I know, but it's neither.
I mean, neither's a stop sign, I guess.
Right, 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 right.
And one thing, and I'm not weighing in one way or the other, is that you gotta make sure, sometimes I think what you build with, with the safety is that it's, it's actually a false security. So you have to be careful when you start balancing that as well. It's like, uh, crosswalks are a really good example. Crosswalk stripes at intersections, when you put them in intersections that aren't protected, there are, isn't a, a signal or, uh, or a stop sign or something, it actually increases, uh, decreases the safety of the pedestrian crossing there because they know that they're safe because they're crossing in a crosswalk. And so they're more likely to walk out in front of traffic. I just had this conversation with my son this morning. Anyways, but you, they, they feel that they're safe because they're standing in between these bars that symbolize safety, even though there is nothing telling the vehicle that it is, that to stop at there. So if they aren't paying a hundred percent poten- uh, if they aren't paying attention, then the person is, that, those bars on the ground don't protect the pedestrian crossing. And so it's, I think that's where, is if you know that you're safe and you start walking in like a pedestrian, that's where you get this false sense of security that you are secure inside of it, even though the person that's not paying attention ends you. Because they had nothing symbolizing that they needed to stop, and they weren't paying enough attention. And it doesn't necessarily, and so I think that.
So you're, you're pulling, you're extrapolating that out to traffic signals. You might think you're safe.
It can be. It can be if you feel that, you know you're safe when you, when the signal changes. And instead of, now you know that, okay, good, I have a left arrow, I'm clear, I'm clear. Turning because you know you're clear. And that doesn't mean that that person that's going fifty over the hill is not doing what the last, the last rear end accident was, was lighting a cigarette, um, while they were driving, and so they couldn't see the signal, um, in front of them and didn't realize it was a red light, and they ran it, and they ran into the back end of somebody. the back end of somebody.
On that particular, I happen to agree with you. The biggest thing I see is running the yellow light. You have a three-second yellow light, a car's way down there, and this, they just see that the light's changing, they go for it, the car coming, the guy runs the yellow light, we have a collision. That's self, self, think they're going to be safe. And I agree with you, I, I see it more over yellow lights, they're running the yellow lights. So, I understand what you're saying.
Any other questions, Mr. Garza?
Is a yellow light only three seconds?
Uh, what?
A yellow light's only three seconds?
Well, that's your minimum. They can have it for more. You should remember that commercial, that black gentleman said, was it yellow, or was it two? And I loved it. Um, it was an insurance question.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
How much historical data is taken into effect to figure the warrants? I mean, how far back do you look at crash data? I mean, how many, is there a standard, it's five years, 10 years, it's?
We would typically look at a three-to-five-year period. The higher the traffic volumes, probably look at a shorter period, like a three-year period. The problem with starting to look at 10 years or more, you might have other things changing in the area, maybe traffic patterns have changed somewhat. So, typically, if there is a crash pattern, it'll show up within a three-to-five-year period.
Okay, because I was curious, because it's my understanding that school's been there for many, many years before a traffic signal ever was put up, even the temporary ones. I was trying to figure out how far you would actually look back, to see how many accidents occurred since that school was built, and no traffic signals have been in that intersection.
I, I do want to mention again that, like you, like you mentioned, a driver gets a green light, they feel safe, and so they, they pull out. Had two experiences. One, I'll tell you about, that happened with my daughter-in-law here, a little over four months ago. This is over in Johnson County, over in the Kansas City area. She was waiting to turn left, she got her green arrow, she pulled out, was making her left turn, and was hit broadside by a driver that ran a red light. Actually, everything came out fine, but nine, or eight months pregnant at the time, put her into labor. So, I want to leave you with, with the fact that just because you have a green light, you're not protected. People run red lights, and they, they, it happens all the time. So, just the fact that you have a signal out there, it is not a guarantee. Fortunately for her and my grandson, everything worked out fine, but that was just another incident that impacted me personally. But, yeah, I mean, I've, I've read lots of crash reports where that's been the situation, where somebody has run a red light. So, it, it's not like an either-or. It's not like you're absolutely making it safer. Usually, yes, but it's not a guarantee.
And Jim, what's your prize for designing an intersection like it should be? Or?
Well, it's, it's going to be between 6 and 10% of the construction estimate is typically what it runs, so.
Let's, let's estimate it really low.
Well, that, I think, is more for a study. Not, not the actual design of an intersection.
Thought I found that gray area.
But, yeah, I mean, if, if you're talking about widening 30th, put in left-turn lanes, you're going to, let's see, 45 miles an hour, you've got to be under six feet, so you're, oh, let's see, so you're about 300 feet just to taper traffic out, to form the left-turn lane. You want to have some space in the left-turn lane for a vehicle to decelerate, and then you're going to want to have a space there for storage. So, you are, I mean, you could be at least 600 feet away from the intersection each way on 30th, give or take. Like you, like you said, Lucille is, is a relatively narrow roadway coming in there, whether you do some improvements on that. But, yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking a very significant project to do the geometric changes to the intersection, and then you add, whether it's, you know, 200,000, 300,000 for the signal, whatever it might be, to have a contractor do it. And I, I, we can develop a, kind of a high-level or a planning cost estimate, so.
Would that qualify for a geometric improvement-type grant?
Man, I would sure encourage you to pursue that. Yeah, I mean, KDOT has a number of different programs, through the Bureau of Local Projects, through, kind of their Traffic Safety Bureau. There, so there is funding available. I mean, it would be a, probably in competition with other cities that are submitting applications. But, but, I mean, that's certainly an avenue I would pursue if you want to do something from a geometric standpoint.
What is the cost of the, of the low-level study? Did you, I mean, that was proposed?
So, we have two costs. One of them is just to do with the cost estimate. And, because this one with the scope, including removing the temporary construction cost estimate, and then the, the maintenance cost, and that's $6,400. And that is just going to develop a cost now. That is counting, if you wanted to proceed with, that's if you know that you want to proceed with just doing the cost estimate. If you want to actually do a full intersection analysis, which they did, what they did was just a warrant analysis on a signal, but to see what, what the best thing to do for that intersection is evaluating every different means and methods there, that study would be $16,000.
And that doesn't get us a design to put out for bid?
No.
But the design to put up to bid is 6 to 11% of the estimated construction cost?
I would say somewhere in the 6 to 10%.
6 to 10% of estimated construction cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's pretty safe to say that you're, well, we know you'll be over 600,000. I think when I was doing street estimates, I was somewhere ballparking that half a million, 600,000 without the signals, and then we had the RCBs, so just safely, I, I think it's going to probably come in a little over a million dollars. But that's just, that's extremely high level without any knowledge, or, without being-
That's a, that's a, that's a fair assumption. Okay. Did you have any more questions on that? Mr. Fass?
No, I, that was the answer I was looking for. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I should have put you on the spot.
They're both getting paid. Any other questions or comments from city council members?
My last comment is this. We don't really have to do the whole thing. We can leave, this is, the intersection's called a banjo situation. The banjos, where you have the two wires coming across. I put a million banjo situations in. Just the thing that's working, all you got to do is add left turns to that 30th Street, put a new controller in there, get your timings right, time it out, so you won't have the stack up. You could just, for now, you can just leave it the way it is, put the lights back up, get your left turn, get your cam, I would say two things. Get the cameras in there, and put left turns on your 30th Street, so it doesn't stack up. So, I mean, right now, the banjo system works, as far as I'm concerned. Then we can wait till we get money to widen the streets. I think off the ra, off the roadway, how much do we have that six-foot clearance off the roadway with the poles that was put up before I went? Is the poles got the clearance off the edge of the street right now, the clearance that we need?
I don't know, because I can't, I haven't, the temporary system, I can't, there is no, there was no study that I can find, done, doing the, for them, or no installation recommendations. So, unfortunately, I can't verify whether, at 45 miles an hour, whether they're in the proper location or not.
Right. As far, as far as I'm concerned, the clearance, you take those poles and move them back, extend your banjos out a little bit more, and you've got your clearance. I mean, you don't have to do the street right now, as far as I'm concerned. Just make some change in the traffic lights, make a protective left turn with the camera, move the cameras, put cameras involved in it, put, put another, another controller, move the poles back so you get the clearance, and then you can run it for now, until we decide what we're going to do. We might even look at the county, see if they want to help us out on this. But, I mean, there's options to it, man. You don't have to put a brand-new intersection and do the streets. There's the traffic lights, you can do things to the traffic lights, and make it work with your controllers. You can make it work, move your poles back. It's just a three-legged intersection. It's not, it's not four-way intersection. It's pretty simple. So that's the way I look at it, just off the experience I have, so. Just wanted to say that, so. That's all I got.
Well, I have zero experience, but I know that I was for putting the solar-powered, more permanent radar thing there, because I thought that if we did maybe some small things, we could get it back to where we were before we rebuilt the bridge. I hope that's helping. I don't know if it is, yet. Probably too soon to tell. It's been seven days, or six days.
Right, but we, we, we didn't put it up until we had a temporary up and could gather data on if it actually improved slowing down speeds, and it did. So that's why we warranted putting it, go ahead and getting it put up permanently.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think, if, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's different than anything we have in Hutch, and I know that it gets my attention now, even more than that great big sign we had, just because it's different. And maybe people get used to it and ignore it, but.
Those, when he's talking about, does it keep programs, does it keep the, the speed limit when someone goes by? It don't?
No, it just is radar detection.
It's radar detection. Also, it doesn't, it only goes up to 15 mi, 55 mile an hour. It don't go raise it any higher than that. Is my right or wrong? Or you don't know?
I don't know, I don't, I didn't, I didn't.
How fast were you going? How fast were you going?
Well, sometimes they use that thing, speeders use that, and say, oh man, I did 50 mile an hour, maybe next week I do 60. You know, I mean, that's just my experience. They use those things for, hell, this is fun, let's do 60 next time. That's just my personal thing. But, so some of those things, when I left Traffic Division, they didn't, they didn't record. Do they record today?
No, that one is just radar. We, we have, the signs that we put out have all the recordings and everything, but this one is just radar, because the data that we had gathered originally showed that the, the outcome was favorable, as in bringing in the speeds closer to the speed limit. So we didn't, now it was more of, not spending the money for doing all of the data gathering and everything, but just getting the attention out there, and making sure people realized that they were going from the 55 to the 45.
Right. The biggest thing, what I'm trying to say, they're saying the $600,000 to redo the street. No, you just put the banjo poles out, make your span there, and you don't have to worry about the high, you've got plenty of clearance on your primary up there. So you've got plenty of clearance, move your poles out till you get your clearance, and then put the banjos, put your left turns in. It's not really all that much, maybe 200,000 at the most. And for all that is, we got traffic light poles here that we could use. I've put traffic light poles in that we hadn't stocked before, so there's answers to it. There's not just the money part of it. $600,000 is a lot of money. If we're going to go do that right, we're going to shock the citizens. Oh my God, we can't do that. Just don't use the money as a thing. Money's part of it, but there's answers to other things that we can do to make it work.
Well, and our old poles no longer meet the minimum criteria for, sorry, our, our new poles, our old poles, I don't believe meet the minimum criteria set by KDOT anymore, longer.
Those are, so, those are civil defense poles. They're 70 foot tall. I know, I have put them in there. They're high, the poles that will work. The only thing I don't know is your depth. It used to be 10 foot. I think your regulations, and you might be able to ask this, Jim, what's your depth now? Is it 14 feet now?
You know, I know KDOT is in the process of changing things. I'm, I'm back in the day where you were, where it was a 10-foot depth and a three-foot diameter footing. I know they've gone to a three-and-a-half foot diameter, and it's a deeper footing nowadays.
Okay. But as far as you, you've got, you've got civil defense iron poles out there, they're 70 foot tall. My gosh, just pick them up, move them back, and you'll get your clearance. I mean, there's ways of doing it. There's ways of doing it. Instead of, I think we do sometimes, we make money and scare our citizens. We can't do something because it's $12,000. Instead of us looking for the answer, we want to use the money as an option. Just don't use money as an option. Let's get rid of what we can do, what's an option that we can do to take care of this problem? How we can, option that we can do is use the stuff we have now, only other than making changes, putting cameras in, making a left turn, dedicated left turn. There's other options to, to do this, to, to meet your criteria that you want. And then we'll come back later and fix the streets. It's not that, to me, we have options out there to fix this, to keep the traffic lights, and to meet the left turns, and to meet everything we need to meet. So, here again, my mouth again, but here we go. That's the way I look at it.
I think there's one cost that isn't being considered, which is the cost of human life. Not, not to say it's not being considered.
Right.
But, putting it into numbers like that, I personally have been in a car that my medical bills were a million dollars. I'm not going to cry on TV again today. It adds up. And that was 20 years ago. So now, compound that by what medical bills are today, and that was actually on an unprotected turn right in front of Union Valley. So, I mean, it's, it's crazy to think that one car accident can cost that much damage.
I wouldn't feel right to not, to me, experienced 37 years of traffic signal technicians, and tell you the ideas I have to, to fix things.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not a street technician. I'm a traffic signal electrician. I was an electrician. For me to sit here, and I locked up that door, and don't say what I think you can do to fix the problem, to keep the lights, and put left turns in, and don't stack the cars up. You've got, you've got a controller that could do anything you wanted to do nowadays. It'll shut off, it'll turn on, it'll put it up flash. So there's a ways to fix it with putting lights, without spending the $600,000 at this time. But that's just my, that's what I'm here for, is to see, as a representative of the people. So I have to say what I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that's, we all have to do that.
That's right, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions during this study session?
No, sir. Believe it or not, no, I don't.
If you change your mind, please let me know.
I will.
All right. Mr. Francis, do you have anything to close us out here on this study session?
Um, I guess probably the only thing I would ask is consensus on how you want to proceed. Obviously, you can't make a, a voted decision, but is this something you want to have on the, maybe the next agenda for a vote on proceeding with the, the studies that were outlined?
I'd like a little more time than that, personally. And I know that our next agenda, we've got ARPA grants to go through, I believe.
I would, if there's, if there's a reasonable way to pull data on similar situations in the past, I would like to see that data.
All right, we'll get that for you.
And then, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, have something on the agenda.
21st, so that'd be April, the first meeting in April.
Correct. And then we can discuss what that might be on the agenda? I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Is that all we need?
I think, Jeff, do you need any further direction?
I think, I think we can, well, basically, hold for two meetings and-
On the, on the sec, in that first meeting in April, we can have it on the agenda to make the decision to move forward with, if we're going to look for a cost estimate. If you want to have something to make a decision on.
Yeah, I'm-
I'm asking the other council members at the same time.
I think that makes sense.
Well, I'm, yeah.
So that gives us, um, four weeks?
Four weeks.
Okay.
So what information do you need between now and then to be comfortable to make that decision?
I would like to see the data on, on similar intersections, and what's happened in the past in regards to before and after accidents, if that's available. And then I would take, like to take this book home and go through this some more.
Okay.
And bother you.
I'm available. So, yes, and then the only other thing I think probably that may come up, if we're wanting to look at different things, especially if we want to look at keeping the banjo system up, is probably, if there's any other safety standards that we just need to take into consideration. But I'll bother JEO, and that would be reflected inside that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, update that, update those cost estimates to reflect those different types of considerations in their study. So, I mean.
All right, with that, do we need to take a motion to adjourn, or are we just done? All right. There might be some people here that might have a couple questions for your expertise, if you have five, 10 minutes.
Sure.
All right, I really appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
I'm ready. I used your blessed interfeiting last week.